I want to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. I have 7:04, if anyone's keeping track. At ten at night, we have board members present. Ms. Kennedy, Mr. Dunn, Ms. O'Brien, Ms. Curtin, and Ms. Steinbeck. And Ms. Taylor won't be here. I'm not sure if Ms. Lersky, if she's capable to make it this evening. But we do have a quorum. So with that, if you could please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. So I believe we have our Columbia High School Student Council reps here. Emma and Rome, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. As a reminder, Spirit Week will begin this Friday and run through next Friday. During the school day on Friday, October 7th, pep rally will be held outside on the turf. This year's pep rally will consist of games such as musical chairs, a blindfolded pillow fight, limbo, male cheerleading, and powder puff.
Following pep rally, the homecoming dance will be held Saturday night, October 8th, in the gymnasium. As homecoming preparations are underway, our most recent meetings have consisted of making pep rally signs and decorations for the dance. This year's theme is Alice in Wonderland. So the hallways of Columbia will be decorated with giant mushrooms, playing cards, and greenery. The student body is really looking forward to one of the events they love most every year. And that's all we have today.
All right, thank you. You're welcome to stay. All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have the draft minutes for the September 14th meeting. My notes, Kathleen and Mark were not here, so we, that still gives us enough to vote on the minutes. So any revisions or comments on the, on the minutes for September 14th? Seeing I need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, I need a second. Yeah, others in favor? Others abstaining? Okay, very good. Okay. That's approved. The next one is the draft minutes for the meeting on September 20th. Kathleen and Emily were not here, so it still gives us enough, folks. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from September 20th. John, second. Mark, others in favor? Who goes abstaining? Emily and Kathleen, very good. We will now move to the board forum. I'll start on my right with Emily. Emily?
No.
Kathleen? Good. Jennifer? John? Mark? Charles? Okay, and I'm good as well. So we'll move to the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wish to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the voting forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board present will conduct the forum for an orderly and efficient operation of work and business. In addition, any remarks which are considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be declared out of order. And all comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address them more at this time? All right. So with that, we'll move to the reports and presentations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Minow. Our first presentation is a special recognition from the New York State School Boards Association. For those members of the public who are watching the meeting via livestream and those members of our community that are here, school board service involves much more than simply showing up two nights a month for the board's regular meeting. There are a lot of leadership opportunities and participation on the part of board members. One of the areas of participation is receiving professional development and leadership development training from the New York State School Boards Association. And last week, we received a letter in the mail from the New York State School Boards Association and a nice plaque recognizing John Dunn for achieving leadership development opportunities, totaling 500 points. Not necessary. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thanks, folks. We also received a certificate for Frank Iboa, our former board member, who has accumulated 75 points of leadership development. So I want to thank Frank as well for his service on the board.
Appreciate it, thank you. And thank you, John, once again, for your dedication service to the school district and the community. Appreciate it.
It's my privilege.
Okay.
I'm going to turn the second item over to Mr. Stiles, our Assistant Superintendent for Cricket Instruction, to introduce a program review.
Sure. Tonight, we have Mr. Scott Halliday, our Music Department Chair. He's going to be doing a presentation of a summary from the music program review that was conducted last year and endorsed by the CCS Committee.
Yes, sir. Great, thank you, everyone. I'm here to speak to our 2022 program review. The program review was an opportunity for us to highlight many of the good things that are going on in our department and also to set new goals and to perhaps look at some things that we could improve on as we move forward. First of all, our committee membership included everyone in our department. Everyone in the department had a hand in this program review. I know some departments will create subgroups of, you know, three or four folks. I wanted to really get the expertise from everybody because as you'll see in this next slide, I broke up our department into the categories that you see up on the screen. So we have many folks that cover and work in multiple categories. But we looked in our program review, you'll see that we're going to look at the band grades 5 through 12, the orchestra program grades 5 through 12, the choral program grade 4 through 12, our elementary general music program grades K through 5, and our secondary general music grades 6 through 12. And although we have five categories, several teachers do teach across more than one of these categories, you know, throughout their week. Something to highlight is our music mission statement. We are not here to turn out professional musicians or music educators. Our goal is to give that lifelong enjoyment to our students that are in our program. If they so choose to go into music as a profession, that's great, and we will certainly assist them on that. But that is not the primary goal of our, our department here. We are a department that affirms that music education provides students with unique and valuable experiences of creating, performing, responding, and connecting. Music is a discipline with articulate and sequential content that complements other areas of the school curriculum. Music education places intellectual demands on students that develop problem-solving techniques and critical thinking skills. Proficiency in music is mandated by the New York State and national standards is essential in promoting maximum growth in every student. Our accomplishments, again, each one of these slides will, you'll see me go through each of those different categories that I had alluded to a few moments ago. So in our band 12, 5 through 12, we continue to have great representation in our all-state area, all-state suburban council, all-county festivals each year. We implemented several years ago a district-wide evening band festival. We felt that the, the community was really responsive to that, and we're going to continue doing that on alternating years. In our orchestra program enrollment, this is something to really note here. The enrollment has surpassed the goal. They set a goal at our last program review of reaching 250 students in their program, and they surpassed that. This program's really taken off in spite of the, you know, the downside that we've had with COVID over the last couple of years. The orchestra program also has representation in our area all-state servant council and all-county festivals each year. In our choral, our 412 choral program, they've updated, rewritten, and implemented the 412 curriculum. Goth students, the middle school choral program, we see a lot of, again, participation in our suburban council middle school. It's something that, you know, we have a very large population of our students that are in those select ensembles. The Columbia choral students represented East Green Bush and multiple regional festivals, similar to our band and our orchestra through all-state conference choir. And last year, we had some in all eastern as well. You can see that the next bullet points increased communication between the elementary choral staff. You know, when you look at things 412, that's, that's something that's really big. And again, with our belltop choir, we have the belltop boy choir and belltop girl choir. Those are things that we feel are really important. Our elementary general program, increased communication again between the staff, updated and implemented the K5 curriculum, and they've input the Edwin Gordon using music learning theory into that program. And all teachers collaborate on a regular basis, even outside of our regular department meetings. They're getting together, they're sharing ideas, they're working on, you know, hey, are you still doing this? Is this, you know, so it's a great collaborative group of, of teachers there. At the secondary level, this is something that's been, something that we want to do for a long time. But with our new general music teacher, Jared Greco, he's done a great job in updating the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum, really making it relevant to the students. There's ukulele program, world drumming, bucket drumming, and the great digital music production skills that these students are learning that they can, you know, they can continue with that. And it's definitely, it has really revitalized the middle school general music program in these last four or five years. Increased enrollment in the general music program, you know, that's something we've had to add sections because he's done such a great job. Students are invested in that, and the, you know, the students are continuing to take that course. We continue the guitar and ukulele club. Increased utilization of student-operated technology in the middle school general music program. We didn't have that before. And with Jared revitalizing that program, we see a lot of that, the newer materials coming into the classroom. There's a new guitar elective that we started at the high school about four years ago. We didn't have for a while any kind of general music program. We only had, you know, you had to already be in the music program if you wanted to be part of the high school program. So we created a course that would be for anybody. So we had students who were not engaged in the program at all and started with guitar curriculum. And like I said, I think this is our fourth year doing that. And then we did have music theory before, but Mrs. Badger has worked with SUNY Schenectady, and we now have a college-level music theory curriculum at the high school. And this is the third year going on in that. Some goals, things that we're looking to do in the band. We want to increase our district-wide enrollment, and we're focusing on the transitional years. In that middle school where students are trying to find different things and find their way, we're really working to, you know, foster something that's not scary when they go and leave their homeschool from elementary to the middle school. So we've been outlining some things that we can do for that. We did that this, this last week at our, we had a department meeting timed on our PD day. We put a proposal to consolidate the multiple part-time FTEs at the middle school into one position. With our orchestra program, we increased the FTE orchestra programs. We're looking to do that. We've talked, I've spoken to, well, last year I spoke to Mr. McHugh. I spoke to the elementary principals, and that is something that is in the works to increase the amount of string teaching time at the elementary level. Since the numbers are going up and matching the numbers in some of the buildings that the band has, those string teachers have about half of the time, or in some cases, a third of the time that the band folks have to get through their curriculum with their students. The orchestra program would like to update the curriculum and obtain an increased teaching space at Goth and Green Meadow. We're right now, again, we're busting at the seams. And I said to Mr. McHugh at the time, I said, you know, I don't, I don't know who to ask for this. And he says, well, put it in your program review. That way, the board knows what your needs are. Superintendent knows what your needs are. So here we go, all right? The choral program, rebuilding age-appropriate skills in the choral setting. COVID has been tough, but we're, I think we've been able to get back on our feet, and we're starting to make that forward progress again. We use the NISMO, New York State School and Music Association, for kind of our gauge for difficulty. So those, you know, bullet points in this month, that's what we're looking to do. So they're level one for seventh grade and as you go through, the more advanced groups getting to that top level five and six. Also updating the choral curriculum in the library for selections. You know, it's tough when you do a pops concert every year, and, you know, pop music changes every three years. So keeping that, that fresh for that program. In our elementary K5, general music will implement a ukulele program. We're going to work on that with our district-wide music budget to get those instruments into each of the elementary schools. And they have enjoyed using the music play, which is a supplement to their general music classroom instruction. Secondary 612. Again, we're looking at storage issues. It's tight over at the middle school. You know, there's a lot of students involved in the program, which is awesome. But when that new music wing was built about 20-some years ago, we didn't have the amount of students in the program that we do now, and they're busting at the seams. The orchestra program is, I think it's 10 times, you know, what was at Goth when I was teaching there. And I left Goth to go to the high school in 2001. So in that 20, 22-year period, 21-year period, the program has really taken off, and we need that storage and bit, really rehearsal space to be addressed and looked at. Continue to update the general music curriculum. That's one of those things that, as I said, Mr. Greco's done a nice job. But because there is digital workstations involved, there's new things that are always coming around, and he's trying to keep that fresh. And, you know, we're working on that. As you can see in some of the next few bullet points, allowing for students to be in composition in their digital audio workstation. That's what DAW is standing for there. We will continue to purchase new guitars through our music budget at the high school, again, just so that we have a good supply. And I've been maintaining those, so maybe that even wouldn't have to be done every single year. Continue teaching music theory. We want to keep offering that free, free college credit to SUNY Schenectady. And then in order for students to get a music sequence at the high school, they need to have that offering. And it's sometimes tough because we have a tight eight-period day. So oftentimes, the enrollment in that class is lower than what you would see in a math class. But that's one thing that we've been able to keep, keep rolling. Our strengths here, again, participation in our local select groups, suburban council, all-county, area, all-state. We've, since the last program review, increased our technology in all of our music classrooms with similar stuff that we're looking at here tonight. The orchestra program, solid retention, as I've mentioned already. Good communication within the department. The repertoire in the library is always, you know, being freshened. The community has seen the chamber orchestra out and about on a lot of, during a lot of events. As I said, the growth in enrollment has been huge over the last, more than just five years, but in, since we're talking about these five years here. And again, we have that, that participation in conference all-state, which is the one out in Rochester, area all-state, all eastern, suburban council, and all-county music festivals. The choral program, again, collegiality. I think that's big. I think we sometimes overlook that. But if you don't like the people that you work with, you're not going to make a good product. And in our, right across the whole music department, we get along extremely well. We enjoy working with one another. There's a lot of creative minds in there, and, you know, we're able to get a lot done. High level of student investment, that's, that's important. Our choral exposure, again, similar to the chamber orchestra, the chamber singers get out and about, community events and things of that nature. Again, participation in conference all-state, area all-state, all eastern, suburban council, and all-county music festivals. Our K5 program, strengths, again, consistent collaboration. There it is, between the music staff. Routine use of technology, and that's something that's really increased in the last five, since the last five-year program review. Routine use of the technology to collaborate, obviously to share with students and teach them and show them new things, but also their collaboration in their, working with their lesson plans. At the 612 level, again, developing relevant curriculum, something that a middle schooler would be interested in, right? There's nothing wrong with Bach and Beethoven, but you don't want to read a book about Bach and Beethoven when you're in seventh grade, okay? So Jared has really revitalized that program, getting the kids' hands on and making that a really relevant course. Again, the guitar course in the curriculum at the high school has been new this five years, and our college-level theory. Areas of weakness and recommendation, this is when everyone gets mad, but there's some things that we'd like to do. And as you're reading the slides, for every recommend, or for every what we would call a weakness, underneath in italicized writing is a recommendation, right? Again, my instruction in doing, this is my third program review. Don't just whine, don't complain, but perhaps offer a solution. In some cases, a solution may not be anything that I have any ability to do, but I'm presenting it to the administration to adjust staffing, minimize curfew. So I'm making everyone aware that this is something that could be done. It's to a certain degree out of my hands, but this is something that if we had an opportunity to change anything, these are the points that we're bringing up here. So the current structure of FTE allocation with multiple teachers at the middle school was something that we were looking at. The eight-period day, I know that's been something that's been, you know, there's nothing we can really do about it, but that does have an impact on our program simply because we have so many singleton courses at the high school. If you have, you know, eight different courses and, you know, a kid wants to take those eight, and they, they may not align periods one through eight. Sometimes we get those overlaps. We see it a lot, we have a lot of, you know, I call them high-powered students. They're really smart kids, they're taking really high-level stuff. And some of their electives, they simply can't take it because of the tightness of the schedule. Many years ago, many of you know, I know because I had your kids, we had a nine-period day, and we had more of that wiggle room, all right? I get it, it's an expense issue, but, you know, having that there is something that would allow many of the other electives outside of music to, to run a little bit more smoothly. In our orchestra program, we talked about the FTE allocation at the elementary school, and we did make a recommendation, we are working on that already. So that's something that's actually moving forward. The written curriculum that is currently in our hands over there was written in 2005. So they're going to either submit us a request for summer curriculum or through our PD days have some time to maybe just kind of tweak some of the things on, on that document. Again, I alluded to the teaching space and instrument storage space at the middle school in particular. Again, I can't just go over and make the walls bigger and make the room bigger and add on space. So, you know, make administration and Board of Education aware that this is a need. And when an opportunity arises that we can look at changing those spaces, have that in the back of your mind. For the choral 412, again, instructional space for chorus at the elementary schools, that's always tough. So again, making, making the folks here aware of that. Updating the choral library to indicate wide selection of pops that I had mentioned to you before. We've been able to, at the middle school and high school level, tap into some textbook funds because that is our text. So that has helped. We're looking to perhaps be able to do that more at the elementary level. Again, performance and instructional space at the middle school building. You know, we're looking at, you know, what, what can we do? How can we, you know, get some elbow room over there? So those are points that we wanted to make happen in there. And our general K, our K5, again, storage space, organizational equipment, again, it's tough. So we need to look at that moving forward here. Again, you see a theme, lack of space, lack of space. It's really tight, it's really tight over, especially over at the middle school. Go over there, you know, during our ensemble time, you can see everybody's packed in there. And then more students would enroll in music theory at the high school if the schedule would accommodate. So it's going back to that scheduling idea, again, for that secondary general. Simply, it's tough to fit it in with, with what we have with our eight-period day. Data points, I'm not going to read all these because there's a lot there. But what I want to highlight on this data point is if you take the GPA average at the high school of all of the students who are not involved in our performing groups, and you put that up against the ones who are, it's typically, and this happened the last time, it happened across suburban council, our music students are typically scoring about five points on average higher with GPAs. So a lot of that is, you know, they're, they're learning how to manage their time, they're learning how to budget their time, they're working collaboratively with their students when they're performing. So that's a reflection on there. And then my last takeaway is, and I don't know if I'm over my 10 minutes or not, but over the past 10 years, I want you guys to hit, I'm going to hit you with these last, on my way out the door. Over the last 10 years, the orchestra program has more than doubled in size. That's something big. The teaching and storage space at Goth Middle School is inadequate to support our current program needs. And then I'm going to leave you with a positive one here. Music staff continues to adjust the curriculum to meet the ever-changing needs of our student population. And this has been very necessary since the beginning of COVID. We can't just plunk down the same kind of information in front of a student and expect them to spit back to us the same information. So we've had to tweak and massage everything that we have done that was normal to us before that. It's become different. Now, I do see things coming back, and I do see things being able to return to, you know, what I would call normal. So that is definitely a positive, I believe, you guys would. Does anyone have any questions?
No, very comprehensive, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So one thing we are looking at in the bracket is long-term planning and things like that, and space needs, and of course, you know, all those things come under consideration based on what the district needs. Look at those as part of your recommendation. All right, turning to the next item is our discussion. Purchasing, purchasing associate documentation, which I understand is really retitling and looking at different programs. So who's going to cover that?
So Linda, myself, and Mary Ridsi took a look at the job title in the business office, account clerk typist. That position has been vacant for a year. Most recently, we were able to fill that role, but that person, after five months, resigned from that position. So we met to analyze what the job description had for typical work activities, job duties, minimum qualifications, against our list of what that position actually is responsible for. And the main responsibility is the individual holding that role would require knowledge in all aspects of the purchase requisition process. So we put together a job description that we feel encompasses all of the present-day responsibilities with minimum qualifications needed to fill the role. And we would like to retitle that with civil service in the hopes of recruiting a qualified candidate that would meet the expectations for the position.
Sure. Well, over the past year, because we have been short-staffed, we have reached out to Questar, who has assisted us. We've had some substitutes come in. And most recently, we took the extra classroom treasure over the summer and had him come over and work with us during the year, during the summer. So, so we've been filling it, filling the gaps as best we could, but it really is a need. This position handles all of the requisitions throughout the district for, from all of the buildings and departments. So it is a key position in the business office.
Any questions or comments? I think doing an analysis of when there are vacancies and changes to either update skills, make changes, do the analysis of the work required, and also provide opportunity for staff to get into these kind of positions is always important. And the next challenge would be to, of course, you've got to bring this forward to the civil service, right, county? And then propose it, and then. You feel that there's a lot of these positions that are, they'll draw more, more candidates?
I think so. We had a lot of success when we re-envisioned the principal account clerk position to reflect the accounts payable associate. So we think that this title and the present-day responsibilities will provide the candidate pool that we need.
Anyone else? So move forward.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Next item is about the policy committee.
Yes, I've been thinking about some areas where, at the central office and board level, we can kind of normalize procedures like we're doing throughout the district. And one of the things that's been challenging over the last couple of years is to create a regular schedule of policy review. You may recall a few years ago, the New York State School Boards Association would send updates to our policies, those that were required, sometimes by the state that needed some revisions. So for example, the New York State Board of Regents might make a change, and then there's a subsequent required policy. There's also recommended policies that the New York State School Boards Association provides districts, and the district school boards can decide whether or not they want to implement such a policy. And we have had somewhat of a fragmented schedule of review. So in order to get us kind of back on track in more of a circular, predictable way, I reached out to the New York State School Boards Association Policy Service, and I'm going to be having a meeting with them tomorrow to better understand the flow of their policies when they come, what's behind the policy recommendation. So for example, you can go on board docs now under policies, and any updates are actually sent through board docs. I'd like to have more discussion with the School Boards Association, what's driving the policy, what's the basis of the policy, and then convene our policy committee, which is Kathleen, Mark, and Joanne, to discuss the policies and have more of a regular flow to the board here. And so I just wanted, you know, some feedback on that. I think we need to have more of a schedule of review. Kind of goes along with Mark's request for the calendar, which we are working on. We have a draft in place, we have to have a central office meeting to kind of fine-tune it. If there's any comments that you have on policy review or anything of that nature, I certainly would welcome them, but just kind of want to get on more of a scheduled basis.
Any comments?
I think this is a really good process. That's one of the things that's very easily neglected is your policies because you're caught up into the business of the environment and the change, especially during COVID. A lot of things were, you were a health service administrator extraordinaire. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's really important. And also, we have to recognize at this level that the social norms are changing as well at a very rapid pace due to a lot of different reasons. And I think we have the technology to monitor our policies in a much more efficient way. So I'm, I'm excited to hear about this.
Thank you, John.
I think that that sounds great, and I echo what John said. I think it's, it's good to look at what's coming, coming through and the pattern and that. Do you, does the policy committee review old policy or longstanding policy through any timeframe? Is that going to be included in your?
Yes. There's really three elements. You upgrade, update your policy. You can rescind your policy if it's no longer required or relevant, and you can adopt a new policy. So part of the cycle of policy review is to look at your current policies and either update them in terms of revising them or changing them, or you say, well, this, this policy is outdated and no longer needed, and you bring a resolution to the board to abolish it.
So you have, you already have a timetable when you go and you look at policy at whatever time?
Actually, we're going to try to establish a more predictable timetable by working with the School Boards Association. That's exactly what we're trying to do, establish a more regular, predictable cycle of policy review.
Yeah, I mean, I think our policy manuals, only manual, because, again, the paper guy, is pretty comprehensive. It's very large, a lot of policies that have been around for a long time. And I think there's some kind of many things we have to address. You know, one thing we need to do is get gender neutral parts of the policies, making sure that things are still relevant. The NISM service, if there's updates or recommended policies, again, that's a statewide organization. They may not exactly fit with what our community needs are, and that may be something that we want to do that they don't recommend, but things like that, I think are good to address and make sure that we're staying current, but also reflecting the needs of our community in particular.
I think it's really important as, as we move this forward. I mean, we just demonstrated in what you're doing with the job descriptions, because the job descriptions are also archaic, too. So I think that this overall approach in bringing technology so that we can have a more hands-on, because what happens in these, whether it's a job description, a policy, or, you know, the music review, I mean, the technology brings all this stuff right to our forefront in a much more efficient way. But the challenge is bringing all that information into the technology as well with the staffing and dealing with current needs. So I think as we move forward, the fact that we're prioritizing bringing all our systems into so that they can be reviewed, is I think one of the challenges that we face as a board is people have different, come at different times. I mean, the people who've been here longest understand the process more, or are frustrated by the process. And, and as we bring new people in, it's much better for us as an entity to be able to bring them up to speed at a more accurate and faster pace so that they can contribute in a, in a more even manner. So I really appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So more, more to come on the schedules, things like that, after your meeting with school boards. Should be fun. Going to the regular business, approval of program for resident children with disabilities. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none in motion to approve. Kathleen, second. John calls in favor. Approved. The board of ed meeting schedule, revised locations. There was some requests to change the locations. The new schedule is in a hard copy and blue here. Any questions on that? Seeing none in motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Emily, opposed. A couple of change orders on the agenda. First one is the phase three for the Renee Building Contractors. Anything we want to comment about that?
That is for the abatement of thermiculate that was discovered at the high school in the boiler room and in a mechanical room. So we needed to abate those in order to use those rooms.
Any questions for Linda? Seeing none in motion to approve that. Michelle, second. Cheryl, all's in favor. Approved. Next change order is the Riverview Construction Phase Two.
This is a change order for, we were discovering sinkholes at Red Mill Elementary out in the yard, and it was due to a broken drainage pipe underneath.
And this was quite, quite an old drainage system, right?
Yes. Yeah, we had several sinkholes.
It was original pipes.
So they've been replaced right up to the building.
Yeah, good.
And these change orders are all permissible under the current project that was approved in 2017, and they're eligible for building a reimbursement.
All right. Need a motion to approve that change order? Kathleen, second. John, all those in favor? We have two tenure items. First one is a resolution for tenure, and I will just open that up quick. And for Jillian, Castaneda?
Jillian Campos Castaneda.
Very good.
The tenure area of science.
Science. Any questions on that? Seeing none in motion to approve Jillian's tenure. Jennifer, second. Michelle, all's in favor? Approved. And next, we have recommendation for tenure for teaching assistants. Bring those up. We have Lisa Del Paso, Mark Oliver, and Catherine Seppier. Am I saying those right?
You are.
Thank you. Any questions on those? Need a motion to approve those? Kathleen, second. Mark, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you. Congratulations to the staff that received tenure. And the next item is the MOA with the CSCA regarding some transportation.
Yes, the CSCA represents our transportation employees, and as the board is aware and the community that we have been in transition, we have our new supervisor now, Dr. Wanda McQueen, who came on board actually the first day of school. That's how we oriented her. Buses were already running. A lot of work was done over the summer by Carrie Anne Rudolph and Jeff Smith, our senior bus drivers. And they did a remarkably good job at putting together new routes, informing the drivers of the changes in the routes, preparing for the beginning of the school year, and put in numerous hours to make it work. We had some conversations about how to get back to normal now that we have a supervisor in place to kind of make sure that the workload isn't as impactful on our employees, that they can go home at a reasonable hour. And as part of that discussion, we felt that we should fairly compensate them with a stipend. And so that's what this agreement is about.
Any questions for, about this item? Seeing none in motion to approve that. John, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Now, I want to thank staff for doing that, and I appreciate the work that they did over the summer in preparation for Dr. McQueen's arrival. Thank you. Now move to committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. We have assistant transportation supervisor interviews scheduled for tomorrow, beginning at 11:30. Our director of people personnel services extended job posting closes on Friday, September 30th. The human resources generalist posting closes tomorrow on the 29th. We have a number of non-instructional positions that we're currently recruiting for. We have a vacant cook position at Columbia High School, one mechanic position, and several bus driver positions. We have some monitor needs across the high school level and also at the elementary level. We have a couple of teaching assistant positions opened at Goff Middle School. And then, we are concluding the building level interviews for school safety supervisor. References have been checked, and we're working on scheduling final interviews. We are currently looking for additional substitute nurses. And lastly, we have selected candidates for the typist position in Bill Coyle's office, and then also the typist position in Dr. Wanda McQueen's office. So those will be recommended appointments at the next meeting in October.
I think there was a communication from Joanne to the family obligations. She was not going to make the, is there anyone else who may be available? If not, proceed, but it was, what time was it?
They begin at 11:30, and we should be done by 1 PM.
If you are available, if you look at your calendars, just get ahold of Marissa. So again, thank you. If not, we just have to proceed.
Thank you.
Moving on to Linda.
Thank you. I would just like to give the board an update on our composting project, as well as our shared tables that have been discussed. Our composting project, we have clubs involved at both the middle school and high school. We have meetings set up this weekend, next week, with a representative coming in from food, food scraps 360, which is the company providing us with the bins and the service. She will meet with the advisors and students, and we're hoping for student participation in that. The composting bins were delivered this week, and we're just working on some logistics on getting them placed and in use. And the monitors are helping to, to, to talk with students as they participate in the program, helping them with what's compostable and what, what will be, you know, disposed of. The shared tables are up and running at Goff, Green Meadow, and DPS, as well as the high school has been running a shared table. So we are working on the other schools. There are support from the monitors there as well. They're making announcements at the beginning of lunch periods as to what, what types of food will go in the, on the shared table. Also, they're, they're thrilled. It just seems to be a general feeling that people are happy that good food is not being thrown out. So, you know, we are working, we're starting with packed, packaged items first, and we have a separate bin, which is called a donation bin, for fresh fruit. And then the fresh fruit is taken back into the kitchens, washed again, and put out on the snack table.
Thank you. Questions for Linda?
I want to thank Mrs. Sknerzky for the idea.
No, thank you. Thank you for everybody who put it together. I'm really excited.
Yeah, and for the background, also, the composting project was pitched to the board last year, and glad to be able to put that in place for the team.
And our new food service manager, Colleen Weiss, is the person who's really taking the lead on this.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you, Colleen.
Now, moving on to Ryan.
So we had our first CCS committee meeting on September 7th. We welcomed a few new members, and then we had a brief discussion about making sure that our membership includes the two new positions that we had. So we've added two new content coordinators at the K5, one at K5 for special education, one at 68 for special education. And we did not have those positions included in CCS. So we had a discussion around that and making sure that those two positions are included in CCS moving forward. We reviewed our meeting schedule for the year, and I made a proposal to have our meetings, every other meeting moved back to in-person. So we're going to do that. So beginning in October, we'll be in-person, rotating every other one from there. And then we just reviewed, we have three program reviews this year: athletics, career and technical education, and language other than English. So those will be coming hopefully to the board in We had a little bit of a discussion. We're going to have all of our summer curriculum writing projects, the project managers do a brief presentation to the CCS committee at our October meeting to summarize what those projects were and go over how they all went. And then I just gave a brief update on some professional development things, got some feedback on how our PD day, our PD days on opening day went. And then, we just talked a little bit about, at the end of last year, last school year in June, there were some changes made to CTE hours for teachers. So that has been a little bit of a discussion, and I just talked about making sure that I'll be working on, making sure that we have a system moving forward so that, you know, the appropriate professional development is included for everyone's CTE hours.
Good. Any questions for Ryan?
Yeah. Can you explain the comment about secret, secret stories, or that it, that that development should come from your office awareness? Do you know what that is in regards to?
Yeah, so secret stories is, is something that we're using at the elementary level now. So we're talking about, you know, seeing if we want to make sure we expand that, and then ultimately that would be brought to CCS. And if it gets endorsed through CCS, then it would, you know, ultimately come through my office instead of, you know, possible building funds and things like that.
You have questions? Thanks, Ryan. And Mr. Simons?
Yes, we had our budget review and revised, budget review and advisory committee meeting last evening. We had two significant items on the agenda. We had a presentation from Morgan Ruthman, who is from the Spiny Group, who is associated with a developmental, development company. They are planning and proposing to the town of Skodak a residential development in the town of Skodak, but fully within our school district, called Van Hosen Station. They estimate that there'll be 200 units, over 50 acres, between around 2,008, 2,000 square foot, square foot family homes, and 192 apartments, both one and two-bedroom apartments. The anticipated timeframe is to begin construction in 2024. The construction period will last three to five years. It will have wooded areas, walking trails, clubhouse features, pools, fire pits, dog park, tennis courts, and green, putting greens, and storage units. The development is anticipated to attract young professionals with young families who want to remain in Skodak and have apartment living. There are, there really aren't any apartment complexes in Skodak, and the feeling was, in their residential analysis that they previously did, that people who move out of Skodak who would prefer to live there, but the affordability of, and access to apartments is not there. The discussions that they're having are ongoing with the town. The location is, and if you can help me with this, is in, in the vicinity of Amazon, but down.
Right. It's, it's, it's on Route 9, where 9 and 20 split is where it's going to be.
So we stressed that as part of our enrollment projection process, that the lines of communication should remain open with the town, with the developer, so that we can anticipate when those apartments and homes start to be occupied, whether we should anticipate more students. And that's really what we do at the BRAC Committee. We exchange with the towns. We talk about residential and commercial development so that the district is aware of the planning that's occurring. In the event that that planning would impact our enrollment, the projected impact on the tax revenues for the district is approximately half a million dollars. Is that right?
Yes.
Which is an increase in terms of what we're receiving on the property right now, which is undeveloped.
Correct. But they have no estimates at this point what the population is going to look like, if it's going to be single, you know, young married people, family, they don't have any.
Yeah, we asked about that. They, the type of development that's occurring, they anticipate would attract single people, newly married people, younger individuals, with maybe young children, or planning to have young children. So that's the, that's the demographic that they project.
What's the developer?
It's the Spiny Group. They have a similar development in Bethlehem, and I can't remember the name of it.
Adams.
Adams, yes.
Adam Station.
Emily was at the meeting, and as was Cheryl.
Whereabouts roughly is the, the district line? Is it down toward the town garage off 9, past like Silverstone and Keller? How far is our district's boundary?
I'm not sure the answer to that.
I think it's around there.
We used to have the map up here.
Right.
What's with the map background?
Right, yes, that's still the district.
Yeah.
It's right on the line.
Yeah, when you said 9, I was thinking maybe it would have been.
Central.
I have, we had kids, friends that are past that, that one street past that. It's definitely ours.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense for the area. Between the two warehouses?
So Amazon is completely in our district. So we get revenue from that.
Yeah, it's definitely in our district.
Okay. You know, Skodak was looking to have, weren't enrolled in their community, but... You know, Skodak was looking to have, weren't enrolled in their community, but they're inside.
It's probably not an accident.
We also had a preview of the building condition survey and this will be very important on the board agenda and in the community's radar for the next school year. The architectural portion of the building condition survey is complete. The site work portion is complete. The mechanical portion is not complete as of yet. On the state requirement, we are scheduled to have the building condition survey completed by December 31st of this year. So on the state cycle of when we're required to do it. It had been at one point on a five year schedule because of the state education department reviewers being so overwhelmed and understaffed. Because of COVID, they, they took priority to the districts that hadn't done a lot of work in a while and were in the worst shape as far as their facilities. And kept them on the five year schedule. A district like ours that have been doing ongoing work as part of our long range plan are now on a seven year schedule. So we have a little more time. Steve Wickman, our architect, worked with Paul Bickel to provide a slideshow and he reviewed some prioritized items. One of the things that we noted was that before we start discussing new items, there were items that were category three on our previous building condition survey that we weren't able to include with the overall costs. So part of our review will be to look at those. First, health and safety items are prioritized by the state and have to be prioritized by the district. But we also spoke about our needs that we've identified and that we want those needs included in the building condition survey. And Steve emphasized, if it isn't the building condition survey, the state isn't going to provide building aid and necessarily approve the project. So upgrades to the playgrounds, replacement to the playgrounds was discussed. We showed pictures of the playgrounds and we talked about the Questar review, architect review that had been done as well. Upgrading the HVAC systems, including air conditioning in the elementary schools and pavement. There's still a lot of pavement work that needs to be done in the district. We showed a picture of what this parking lot outside looked like before and after. The new drainage that we're putting in along with the paving and the curving and there's more work to be done on this. But we basically exchanged what information we had regarding the building condition survey. The other thing we're going to put in the building condition survey that we haven't thought about is another access road to the high school. And we still have a lot of conversations that we have to have with property owners over on Maddox Road, off of Maddox Road, but we've identified that as an area to go into the building condition survey. Cause if you don't identify it as an issue, once you get to the point of planning and, and project implementation, the state may not approve it. So there's more work to be done on it. I invite anybody who is interested in the potential for the next capital project. We attend our next BRAC meeting, which is October.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah, seven o'clock. And the meeting was very well attended by BRAC members, our board and our athletic director, members of the community, John Keller, and our construction manager from St. Ruben, Tom Serviani, and then myself, Wayne Pratt chaired the meeting. It was a good meeting. Ask Emily and Cheryl if they have any comments on the meeting.
Just talk a lot about the athletic fields too, the work that needs to be done. Is that the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we showed a picture of the, of the, of the drainage issues at the middle school. We, I forgot that. I'm glad you mentioned that. We showed some slides from the athletic study that was done by March Associates in 2018 and identified some of the issues at the middle school regarding fields that can't be used because of the drainage. We talked about the drainage on the fields by the high school, by the baseball field. Some work had been done, further improvements were needed. We talked about potential for handicapped accessibility to the playgrounds and to some of the fields. And that, we brought that study back out, but that study needs to be updated with current prices. One thing I will warn you about, you probably know this intuitively, that when we put a number on an item in the building condition survey in years past, our architect would inflate that number by about six percent to allow for a cost escalation. He's going to use 30% because of what's happening in the market right now. That, that to project those costs out so that when we do decide if we're going to do that work, as long as we come under budget. We've been very successful in this current project, although it has been challenging to get it done during the timeframe that we wanted to get it done. Our costs have come in well under the estimates originally and we've been able to do extra work. We want to put ourselves in a good position for the next time. We also want to look at our debt. And when we're retiring, and we'll have our first capital.
Capital markets.
Capital markets, do a study for the board on, on the timing of this. And when we can retire debt from the previous capital projects and try to, you know, bring on a new project without too much impact on the local tax, local tax levy.
So, you know, when we start talking about the athletic fields, I'd like to make sure that we put the middle school a little bit higher on the priority. We put a lot in the high school and appreciate that, but the middle school modified teams really don't have a lot of.
It was the forefront of our presentation on the athletic facilities. It was the thing that we emphasized that we have unusable fields. And we have a situation where if it rains and it's wet, kids can't really practice out there. We're, we're competing for the same turf field. We don't have the ability to, and you could really develop. And we, I think we also had in the original design, a field with a track. Whether or not we decide to do that, that's a more decision, but it's, it's on our radar and it's at the top.
Yeah. And just the regular gym classes are limited. When it's raining, it's, it's all good.
Is the track up behind Gen A part of this discussion too?
Yes.
Was there conversations about instructional spaces?
We, we did not get to that point. One of the things I have talked with Allison Hojer about, we'll do what we did last time. When we get to that point, we will involve some of the teachers and the principals and educators in those discussions.
So this would be the appropriate time to insert storage for the music department.
One thing that is a big factor, and I said this last evening, is what? We have a building aid reimbursement ratio as a district, which is somewhere between 65% and 70%. Correctly. We don't know the exact.
Sixty.
Last time it was 72. It's based on enrollment. It's based on other wealth factors. You want to design your project in such a way that you maximize the number, the amount of building aid that you receive. Certain types of projects are not eligible for building aid. So we use an example, if you wanted to put an extra gym back on the high school, you're not going to get any aid on that because the enrollment will, will, the state will say, yes, we understand you want to expand your program. Yes, we want to understand, we understand you want to improve your program by having more space. But based on the 1,200 students you have in the high school, your gym space is sufficient by our rules. If you have extra room around the district, they don't care about, honestly, they don't care that the community is upset that you might have to change attendance zones. It's not a factor that they consider. They say, well, you've got extra classrooms. We use a number 27. Your class sizes might be 24, 23 or fewer. It doesn't matter to us. We show in our analysis, you could move kids around. So therefore we won't support an addition on, for example, belt out. So these are the kinds of things that we'll be talking about.
They won't support it as far as aid, right. But if we as a board decide that we want to bring on some of these.
You can do so at local cost. So the, all of that kind of information will be on the building condition surveys done, discussed at BRAC. But ultimately we will be bringing through BRAC recommendations to the board for a future capital project. And honestly, if we can get the work done, I would like to come out in the spring at budget time with another vote for a capital project to be determined by the board. The scope would be determined by the board, what we do. But I think we're finishing up this project. We're learning a lot about other things that need to be done as we've gotten into this work. The prices are not going to go down. They're only going to go up. So it's a good time maybe to bring another capital project forward to the community.
You know, most of our recent capital projects and stuff have been, you know, replacing old, you know, redesigned. We have not significantly added to, to our buildings in quite some time.
That's correct.
So the more and more we put it off, the more and more the prices are going to go up. So I think, you know, we should really take a hard look at it, this one, to say, okay, where do we need more space? And get it now because, you know, in five years, prices are going to be more. So we got to, you know, at some point say, we're going to do it. Right. You know, and find some of those buildings, the middle school, belt out that needs some space and, and, and so, okay, let's, let's figure out how we can do it. We may have to eat a little bit more of that cost. We do have a reserve we're starting, right?
We talked about that last night.
Right. So we can start, you know, having some of that funding. But at some point in time, we have to consider addition, additional space, not just, you know, redesign and, and, you know, make old look new.
In some, there are some ways, you're correct, Mark. There are some ways to look at a building differently and perhaps create more space by not even adding an extra, put extra to the footprint. So that's one thing that our architects can do is say, for example, Scott's concern.
Repurposing.
Maybe you'll look at how it was designed back when the building was originally built or was renovated. Looking at it differently now, how might you be able to rework the existing space? And then the next step would be, do we actually need to expand the footprint of classrooms on, for example? And there's ways that our architect and construction managers can work with us to maximize the, the aid, but also expand the space. So it's not a, it's not a hard and fast rule that the state won't aid additions, so to speak. It depends on how you go about the additions. So this is something that we really need to, need to keep talking about.
But like I said, we just need to start really looking at it because like you said, every year we put it off to the next one, to the next one. I mean, prices aren't going to keep going up. So, you know, let's just look at it now, get the pricing in, in, you know, tackle some stuff.
Thank you.
Just a, just one quick comment. I agree with Michelle and what, what she said about the middle school. A lot of the projects we've been done around the district, we've had done some stuff to the middle school, but the, the grounds and the, the, the exterior of it is not a very inviting, when you look at it, for the kids. And I think that if we can find a way to prioritize their recreation and their, because we're talking about integrating the, the K through 12 athletic programs, and I'm sure we're going to hear about that. There's, it almost stops at the middle school because of, there's very limited. So I think, you know, to Mark's point, Michelle's point, and to your point, that the drainage, I mean, other than having a fishing club out there when it rains real hard, there's, there's really no, it's just giant wasted space. So I think part of our overview of the, of the district and its facilities is how can we maximize the use that benefits the students? And, and the, the prices on these projects, you know, despite what they tell you every night is not going to go down for quite some time. So I, I, I will support that comprehensive review.
One of the great things about the location of the middle school is the, you've got the surrounding school fields, which we've done. You've got the Little League fields, you've got the girls softball complex. With the right design behind golf, you can kind of tie that in.
Right.
With pathways and ways to walk between the properties safely. It adds to the community benefit too, because you can host tournaments, certain tournaments, bringing people from the outside, shop in your stores, go to your restaurants, it has a spillover effect into the community benefit as well. And I don't think it would be very hard to not only develop those fields, but tie in the way to connect to some of the, some of the complexes that are not really operated by the district.
One other thing if they could get considered is, you know, the 1970 sign at the entrance to Columbia High School has served us very well. For many years and, you know, going out, having to change the letters and stuff, you know.
We actually have that in the current project, I think, still. We've talked about it a number of times. We hold, we're holding some money, but we haven't made a determination as to the sign selection. Talked to Mr. Harkin about it. We would repurpose that sign for nostalgia.
We're going to put it in the middle school.
The next board pitch.
We have talked about that and we're just getting down to the end of the project now and, and reviewing the amount of money that we have left. One of the main deciding factors is we just opened bids for the fire alarm system at the high school, which has to be done. So now we'll be able to take a look at what are we going to have left over in order to address some of these other items that, that we want. And then I would like to remind the board too, that another large item that will be in the building condition survey is preparing for the infrastructure for the electric buses that we're going to be required to purchase as well.
I have some good news on that front, not to distir too far from the agenda. NISMAC, this is the New York State Energy, I forget the full name, but it's a state agency that oversees energy. It's going to work with various advocacy groups, including the superintendent's school boards to help troubleshoot and identify issues regarding the timeline, implementing the timeline to convert to zero emission buses. They, the theory is that they will be able to be helpful in conceding the potential changes to the timeline in the law. And the legislative committee of NSCUS, which I'm on, is meeting with them in December. So there's some recognition at the state level that this is a tough, almost impossible timeline to meet, 2027 to be able to no longer purchase.
Right. We're supposed to, I think 2025, we're supposed to start purchasing zero emission buses and be fully zero emission by 2035.
I think Jen and I were recently at a board training and we had heard that a local district had purchased two already. And they used and they were able to get some funding for that. So perhaps we should, I know it's a sore subject, but perhaps maybe being proactive would be better. And if that is funding has a, you know, end date or, you know, an amount that will dry up, perhaps looking into it sooner rather than later would be more beneficial.
There is a grant funding that's available.
I was trying to remember what district.
Bethlehem.
We had talked about alternative fuel buses before. You're kind of going a little path of confusion. So more to come. I would like to see if the board is okay that we move kind of some of this building condition conversations to a regular standing item. Almost like an old business kind of VP, I guess it's a standing item because I do think it's an important topic. And if we're looking to do something to present in the spring, that's a pretty aggressive timeline for what could amount to be a very large project. So there had to be some of these kinds of discussions regularly.
Yeah, there's so much going on.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on our agenda, table motions, we don't have any? Old business?
So I know Jeff, as well as myself, have kind of been really pushing the county on the, on the cameras for the buses. I know you've emailed them. I've emailed them. I've received no response. So, you know, can we maybe as a district draft up a letter and, and send it out? You know, ask what this, you know, what the status is.
Sure.
The last that I had heard is what it was with the, the county attorney's office waiting for their sign off.
Interesting.
The bus company is, is biting that, or the company that wants to install the cameras, you know, is biting at the bit to, to get into, to Runcer County here because there's, I think we're up to maybe five school districts already in the county that, that are interested in, have signed on to, to do this. So, you know, maybe our emails are not going to the right people. So.
It's a good idea.
So maybe something from Jeff, myself and you.
Yeah, just a, a letter. Yeah, just a, a letter to, to the county exec saying, hey, you know, this is important. We're willing to, you know, help move it along, you know, can we kind of get an update as to, you know, where we.
It's a good idea. Everything that we were supposed to do, we've done.
We've done.
Many months ago.
Months and months and months and months ago.
Yeah, didn't only count that as something we started.
South County has, has the program.
One of them just implemented it at the beginning of this school year, somewhere over in Alvin County.
Yeah.
Well, if that doesn't get a response, maybe the five school districts go together.
So it's been a while, the West New York City School Board's convention is forward, so.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? So moving on to our consent agenda, items A through H. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing nine, a motion to approve that. Mark, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Do not have any addendums? Any new business board members? So there was a communication about the Saturday workshop in, on November 5th and participation there, so just want to put that out there as something that with Lil Daggett, I hope you saw that. If they're interested in, we're going to try to put together a team, I think internally and probably a couple of board members will probably attend. Mark, I don't know if you will attend, or if someone else wants to attend and be part of that project. It's a Saturday, 11:05 from nine to 12. So if you're interested and available, let us know, we'll have a team put together. Yeah, yeah, we have some time. Our CP to Quester was.
Either you can respond directly to Quester or Stephanie can handle the reservations for you.
Very good. Public forum. Next item, any other new businesses, by the way, anything else? Second public forum, anyone from the public want to speak? We'll go to the board forum, we'll start at my left with Cheryl.
I apologize, what's an Atlanta support meeting, but I do want to say thank you to Bill Coyle for stepping up and, and helping us on behalf of the board. We really appreciate it, short notice, and we really appreciate you coming back again and helping with us, so thank you.
Bill, the leaves are turning up north.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. I'm good, man, thanks.
Thank you, John. Jennifer? Kathleen?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Halliday. My kids were very involved in music all the way through, and it is amazing to see the strides that have been made since they left. It wasn't that long ago. But it's, it's amazing what the, our music department does. I still go back for the concerts and stuff because it is very enjoyable. Thank you.
Thanks for Kathleen, Emily? I don't have anything, one time.
One announcement, it just came to our attention this afternoon, and it's a very good announcement. Mark Adam, everybody knows, is our public communication specialist. Our district has received three awards from the New York State School Public Releases Association. We've earned an excellence in writing award for our story that Mark published on our website regarding our new clay target team. We won an award for excellence in right honor, award of honor, excellence in writing for elementary students show growth in reading and math on mid-year assessments. And we won an award of merit for our story on new mental health satellite clinic opens up at Columbia in Goff. Mark does a terrific job. He will be rolling out an announcement on this to the community. I just want to thank Mark for all of his work and those people that contribute.
With, with that, will there be like awards we can recognize Mark at?
I, I would like to have Mark come to a meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You could do a selfie.
The iPhones out. Okay, all right. With that, that concludes our regular business. We do have need for executive session for personal contractual and personnel matters. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Second, John, all those in favor? All right, thank you everyone, have a great night. Appreciate your attendance.